I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on February 27, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Moved by Huen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. On to item number four. I have two proclamations in one this evening, and these, the proclamations are for International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Whereas, International Women's Day is observed around the world on March 8th to celebrate the achievements of women, and Women's History Month in March recognizes the contributions of women in the United States. And whereas, the theme for International Women's Day 2024 is Invest in Women, Accelerate Progress. And the theme for Women's History Month is Inspire Inclusion. And whereas, in 2024, International Women's Day and Women's History Month come at the midpoint of the United States, United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, which sets targets for gender equity and inclusion, as well as the eradication of poverty and hunger, good health, education for all, climate action, and other priorities by 2030. And whereas, Sustainable Development Goal Number Three, Good Health and Well-Being, aims to reduce by one-third premature mortality for non-communicable diseases through prevention and treatment, and to promote mental health and well-being. And whereas, women leaders and women-led organizations are working in our community and around the world to promote good health and well-being. And whereas, the International Women's Day will be celebrated locally, at night of 1,000 dinners on Thursday, March 7th, and will honor five women-led organizations that are advancing good health and well-being: Four Seas of Johnson County, the Global Kids School-Based Clinics, the Emma Goldman Clinic, and the Youth Crisis Stabilization Program, and the UN Children's Fund, also known as UNICEF. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2024, as International Women's Day, and March 2024 as Women's History Month, in Coralville, and I urge all persons to commemorate and celebrate the achievement of women changing the world. Signed on this 27th day of February, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we have some guests here to receive this proclamation. Would you like to come to the microphone and introduce yourselves, please?
Hi, everyone. My name is Bijou Malia Bo, and I'm a Johnson County UNA Board Member.
And my name is Jim Olson. I'm a resident of, proud resident of Coralville, and also a member of the Board of the Johnson County UNA. So, thank you, thank you Mayor Foster for that proclamation. We are observing, celebrating International Women's Day at an event next Thursday, March 7th. This will be the 24th year that we've had such a celebration. In the first 23 years, the county celebration was held in Iowa City, but this year, long overdue, the event is going to be in Coralville. It's going to be at the Unitarian Universal Society on Oakdale Road. Mayor Foster will be there to bring greetings, and councilperson Hi will be there as well, and is bringing some members of the community. We've had a very strong response to our invitation, and there are still a few tickets left, and they can be purchased on Eventbrite. So, thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to a great observance of International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Would you like a photo?
Yes.
Okay, outstanding. All right. Thank you. Here you go. All right, thank you so much. Okay. Now, on to item number five. I am very pleased to be presenting the Volunteer Coach of the Year Award to Dr. Patricia Espy-Fifer and Sheila Stiles for their contributions to the Coralville Parks and Rec Youth Sports Program. And we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud, here to tell us a little bit about these extraordinary individuals and their service to the community.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the fifth year that the Parks and Recreation Department has presented the Volunteer Youth Coach of the Year Award. This award recognizes those coaches that go above and beyond in the volunteer work they do with Coralville Parks and Recreation sports programs. To be selected for the award, coaches must first be nominated by a parent, coach, or Coralville staff member, and all nominations are reviewed by the athletics staff. The award recipient is then selected based on the nominations they receive, the number of sports programs they have coached, and letters of support. Other coaches that were nominated for the 2023 Coach of the Year Award and deserve to be recognized are John Buckner, Kevin Corkery, Raymond Whalen, Nick Kating, Troy Halverson, and Jason Erdahl. Dr. Patricia Espy-Fifer and Sheila Stiles were nominated by Jenny Patterson, Tina McPherson, Jason Pfeiffer, and Jordan Blile, our Coralville Athletics Supervisor. And Jordan works directly with our youth athletic coaches, and he writes, "Even before nominations started to be received for the 2023 Coach of the Year Award, I had convinced myself that I would be nominating Patty and Sheila as a coaching team. I was very happy to see that there were parents that felt the same way as I did. The only difference is that I'm also nominating them on how they, how well they communicate with me," and I'm having a little trouble communicating there. "Every time that Patty and Sheila have offered to coach, I know that parents will receive timely communication about practices and game schedules. I know that Patty and Sheila will contact me if their team needs anything, and I know their players are going to have a great time participating in our programs. As a recreation programmer, I could not ask for a better example of how to be involved as a coach in recreational sports. Coralville could not offer the programs we do without the help of a great volunteer like Patty and like Sheila. It is for that reason that I feel that both deserve to be recognized for their contributions." And that was a short note from Jordan. A little bit about Dr. Patricia Espy-Fifer, or as I know her as Patty. Patty and her husband Jason relocated to Coralville from Charlottesville, Virginia, in 2004 to be back in the Midwest and closer to family as they started their careers. Patricia is a clinical professor and neuropsychologist within the Department of Psychiatry at UIHC, and Director of Sports Psychology and Student-Athlete Mental Health Services for UI Athletics. Go Hawks! All three, all three of their children, Reina, Nicholas, and Amara, have been active in sports, all which have began with programming through Coralville, the Coralville Recreation Center. Patty has volunteered with coaching basketball and volleyball off and on since 2008, and has loved being part of the program. In her opinion, there is nothing better than getting to watch children gain confidence in themselves through positive steam, team experiences. And she says, "Thanks for letting me be a part of your youth sports programming." Sheila Stiles is a 16-year veteran of, or resident of Coralville after she and her husband bought their house in 2008. Sheila is the athletic trainer for Iowa City West High School, and if she's not covering a game for the Trojans, you will find her cheering on her daughter Reagan or son Grayden at one of their sporting events, or her husband Brad, the West High Boys Varsity Soccer Head Coach. Sheila has volunteered with her daughter's T-ball team, basketball, and two years with volleyball. And Sheila said, "I'm so grateful for all the opportunities the Coralville Rec provides for our children." Both of these are outstanding volunteer coaches, outstanding women in our community, and their children have not only participated in sports, but also with our before and after-school programs, and with our summer camp programs. So, we call their kids Park and Rec kids, and still do when we see them, even though they're a little old and don't like being caught that anywhere. So, I'd like to have Jordan come up, and along with Mayor, you guys can present this award. And Sheila is busy tonight with-
Oh, there's a game.
A game.
Because, yes, I, I see Sheila frequently at the games. My son is on the West High Basketball Team, so I'm like, that's why Sheila's not here. Yeah. All right. Come on up. All right, and I do just want to say thank you to those individuals, Patty and Sheila, for all of your work. It's so important. You know, we, we really need those volunteer coaches, and, and really appreciate that service to the community. So, thank you very much. Yes, okay. Fantastic. On to item number seven, Highway 6 Urban Revitalization Plan. This is a public hearing, and this is the first step in the process to allow for tax abatements for a development on two, oh, I missed the community comments, I'm sorry. I haven't been here in a couple weeks. You can tell I'm missing agenda items. The next item should be community comments. This is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual comment time and the overall speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So, I don't think we have anyone with us tonight. Okay? So then, we will get back to item number seven, the Highway 6 Urban Revitalization Plan. This is the public hearing, and this is the first step in the process to allow for tax abatements for a development on two parcels directly west of the Lowe's Home Center on Highway 6. So, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Don't think so. Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the Highway 6 Urban Revitalization Plan. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Knutson, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this topic?
So, the SIFCO building's going up now?
Yeah, this is not for the SIFCO building. SIFCO's on the other, this is for the property that's immediately west of Lowe's that is on the north side of Highway 6. So, this is where the esports facility, there's going to be an esports facility, and there'll also be a couple other commercial buildings on there. The tax abatement is just for the esports facility. The, they will not be getting any assistance for the other commercial buildings on that lot. Next meeting, we'll be bringing a development agreement back. There's a lot of improvements. They, they need to do improvements to Highway 6, and they'll have to go through the PUD process, so, but this, this will get them started on that, and if we approve the agreement, the next meeting, they're planning on closing at the end of March, and so they can get going on this project.
Will they share that entrance into Lowe's, and you could be able to go-
Yes, that'll be there, and then there'll be a second entrance on Highway 6, I believe, across Deer Creek Road, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. So, that'll be the, those are the only two entrances that'll be on that property.
Yeah. And we get the tax, it's a 20-year property, though.
It's a, well, it'll be an abatement for 15 years for them, just for the one building, but we, we'll get the tax revenue off all the rest of the buildings, too.
For 20.
For, for 20, yes. We'll start the ordinance when the commercial buildings are built, yes. And we'll get the last five off this one also.
Yeah.
So, that's just that little plot of land west, right next to Lowe's.
Yep.
It's like, that's the interstate and-
Yep, yeah. It's been sitting there empty for a long time, so, so, yes, there've been a couple people have looked at that property. It's kind of challenging. There's a lot of improvements that need to be done on Highway 6 to make that work.
It's a pretty slope, isn't it?
Yes, that's why it's very challenging. So, it's a unique project. That's why they asked for, that's providing assistance for the, the unique project there, but the rest of the, you know, we don't give assistance to any other, I don't know if it'd be commercial strip malls or bigger buildings. We don't, we don't typically assist those, and they will not be assisted on this project either.
Yeah, and I think this is going to be really exciting. This is one of those things that I don't think there's any other type of facility like this in the area.
I, I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, and, and I think this is, this is really going to take off. I'm really eager to see how this takes shape.
Yeah, so you'll be over the, if we, if the council chooses to approve the development group at the next meeting, then they'll have a PUD process that'll start after that. So, we'll be seeing that for the rest of the summer, I'm sure.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions?
What is the demographic that these facilities serve?
All ages.
Yes.
Everything from youth to 40, 50-year-olds, so.
That's not all ages.
But a large demographic.
Yeah, I was thinking it was just being really tailored to younger folks, but not really-
No, actually, they have leagues for old, you know, for adults as well.
More seasoned video games.
So, you and Rich will both be welcome.
There you go.
Just curious.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number eight, Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. So, we have two parts to this agenda item, and both parts involve resetting dates for public hearings. So, with item A, it would be resetting the date on a public hearing on the environmental information document, and this is a requirement to receive state revolving funds for this project. And the public hearing for this will be on March 19th. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution resetting a public hearing on the environmental information document, and directly published notice to the same, both for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Huen. Questions, comments, or discussion? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And item B, this is resetting the public hearing date for the construction of the Force Main from Brown Deer Number 4 Lift Station West along Oakdale Boulevard through the 12th Avenue intersection to Oakdale Road, then west, to the west end on Oakdale Road. And the public hearing for this item will also be set for March 19th, 2024. Could I have the roll, or the resolution, please?
Resolution resetting a public hearing on the plan, specifications, estimated costs in form of contract for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Huen, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions or discussion on this one? All right, roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number nine, proposed fiscal year 2025 Property Tax Levy Hearing. So, this is a new step in our budget process, and it requires that we have a separate meeting for a public hearing on the consolidated general fund tax levy. And the public hearing will be held here at Coralville City Hall, beginning at 6 o'clock PM on March 26th, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of considering the consolidated general fund tax levy for the city's 2025 fiscal year budget. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Peterson, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion about this? All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 10, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent, the consent calendar as presented, A to U.
Moved by Huen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 11, city administrators' report.
Um, yeah, if, I would like to give Scott just a minute to, since before our next meeting, we'll be starting 50th Street project. If he wants to just update the public on what will be happening.
Yeah, so as of today, we have a planned start date of Monday, March 11th, for the first phase of the 5th Street Improvements Project that extends from 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. The, the first phase is at the far west end, so it involves closing the 5th Street and 20th Avenue intersection completely, and that's to both vehicles and pedestrians. And the reason we need to do that is we are completely removing the pavement, doing some subgrade improvements that will sit underneath the new pavement, also adding new storm sewer, putting the pavement back, putting sidewalks back. So, a lot of things to do, but we actually intentionally kept Phase 1 very compact so that we can get it done just as quickly as possible. And I think everybody's aware, we've been doing utility relocation work over the past 18 months or so, and so that will help expedite the completion of Phase 1. We're actually having a contractor meeting here in a couple of days, and following that, we'll issue another press release where we set that formal start date for Phase 1.
And then the Clear Creek Project has started?
Yeah, the Clear Creek Mitigation Project has started, or Stream Mitigation Project has started. I don't know if Sherry, do you have any, yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't updated on that as much as I, on some of the others, if you want to just update.
All right, the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Project has started. Right, the first two parts that they are working on are Reach 3 and Beck's Creek. That, the Reach 3 is down along, south of Hawkeye Hotel's headquarters, and then Beck's Creek flows through the Flow Trail and Cross area. So, both of those impact two park systems. One, the Altmeier Family Park, disc golf area will be closed through that project as they are making significant changes along the creek bank, and will be running some very large equipment directly back and forth to Deer Creek Road, a lot of dirt coming in and out, very large movers, very large backhoes. I've never seen a backhoe so large as the two that they unloaded today out there. So, we just felt it was safest to try not to work around that, but to just close, and the, the area there, and our, and the cross and flow trail, it will also be closed until we've got that part done. We are anticipating somewhere between the middle to end of May for those to be reopened, and we're going to take that time to do some work on both of those areas. So, they are park systems that are very well-loved, and so therefore can use some renovation while we have them closed. And so, we'll take advantage of that opportunity. They, the next part that they'll be starting here, probably in the middle of next week, is Reach 3, or Reach 1, and that runs from I-80 to 380. So, the trail system along there, Clear Creek Trail, will be impacted, but we're working on a detour for that particular spot. We don't have it in place yet, but we're trying very hard to make sure that our recently just-opened Clear Creek Trail through to Tiffin doesn't get impacted, so people can't use it this spring and summer. So, we'll still be working on the details. Our site, website is www.coralville.org/StreamMitigation, and you'll be able to find all of the updates, as well as a 24-hour camera if you'd like to see how the stream is going to change. We have the cameras up, and they're already live.
Very cool, very cool. Awesome. Thank you for that update. Does anybody have any questions for Sherry?
I have a comment. Appreciate you keeping that open. Only been on that stretch a few times, but amazed at how many people utilize it, so, and I think some for commuting even, so.
Sure. Yeah, I was working with the MPO today, and we have almost 550 users a day through the Deer Creek Road area. Like, the counter was at, on the Clear Creek Trail at the Deer Creek Road area. So, it's very, very important that we're able to keep that, that open, so we're working really hard to, to try to figure that out.
Great. It's an exciting project. Thank you for that update, and thank you, Scott, too, for your update.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Mayor's report, I have a couple of things. The first thing I want to mention is that we are receiving, or soliciting feedback right now for our rec center and pool redesign project. I'm sure that might have been mentioned at the last meeting. I was not able to attend that one, but just wanted to remind people, we really want to get a lot of responses for that project. So, this is very exciting. It is, it is your time to weigh in on what the rec center could look like for the next 50 years. I did notice, before I came in from the, the meeting, or for the meeting, that we have information at the front desk here at City Hall, so you can come in and pick up information, just a little flyer. It has a, I think there's a QR code, right, Sherry, that you can scan that'll take you to the survey. You can also check the city's website for that form as well. So, we really do want to hear from everyone on, on how, you know, what your visions are, and what your, how you would like the rec center to, to look in the next, the next phase, in the next version of that facility. Also, wanted to mention that Thursday, February 29th, the Domestic Violence Intervention Super Bowl is happening at the Hyatt. It begins at 5:00 PM. It's a great organization. I used to work for DVIP, and I'm looking forward to the event, to come as an attendee instead of an employee this time. But it's a really great cause. They are working to build a badly-needed new shelter. Unfortunately, like all nonprofits, they're seeing their client base growing, and there's just a lot of need right now. The shelter is always full. It's really exciting that they're on the, the cusp of having a new, new facility for the, the victim survivors that they serve. So, would encourage folks to, to check that out. You can purchase tickets on DVIP's website. And then last, but not least, just a quick little personal thing. I want to give a birthday shout-out to my son Jude. He is 11 today, and time really does fly. I was reminiscing with Lori before the meeting, that I remember, I remember doing a birthday greeting for him when I was first elected to the city council, one of the first meetings I went to. And at that time, I was telling him, "Happy Birthday", for his fifth birthday. So, I'm like, wow, it's been, it's been six years. That's, that's wild. So, happy birthday to Jude. And that is all I have. City Attorney's report?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, excellent. Well, we'll go on to committee and council members' report. We'll start down here with Lori.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Okay. How about you?
Yeah, I, I did go visit the new youth stabilization building. I have to say, I was very impressed. It's a nice area. I think they have a great program in place. I think they could sleep up to three or four, you know, at, at a time, and, and house them nicely. There's, I know some of the programs is, they have a horse out there, so some animal programs. There's a nice little pond there for, they could do some fishing, and they do art and music and, and other things. I think it's a great program. It's a really nice area. I'm glad to see they're getting something like that. And also, while we're there, they talked about the mental health mobilization, or the Mobile Crisis Unit, and I thought that was very interesting. I learned some, some facts that I did not know, and not to be somber or bring down the mood or anything, but this, this unit should help our police officers, especially the Sheriff's Department, with having to deal with that first touch of person that might be dealing with a, a mental health issue. And, you know, these, the people that will come in that unit are trained and, and